September 2, 2017, meeting of the Pacific Planning Commission. I think we'll want to start then with a roll call.
Commissioner Stegge.
Here.
Vice Chair Cooper.
Here.
Chair Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Thank you. Our next order of business then will be a salute to the flag and I'll ask Commissioner Cooper to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the August 21st, 2017 meeting. My recollection from a couple of meetings ago is that you don't actually have to have been present at that meeting to vote on these matters of approving the minutes. I know that was sort of a change from past practice. Did I have that right?
That's correct. You're basically just stating that they're minutes correct, correctly prepared in form.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. So we've got the minutes of August 21st, 2017. In other words, some of you all who were actually present at those meetings, I don't know if anybody had any comments on them before we move to a motion to approve them. Doesn't look like it. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, first I wanted to start out with, I thought we had to do the approval of the order of agenda.
Oh, shoot. You know, I missed that. So why don't we take a step back and thank you for catching that. Can I get a motion to approve the order of agenda? Looks like Commissioner Gordon?
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Can we just go ahead and vote? All right, well, that's unanimously approved. Thank you again, Commissioner Clifford, for catching that. Let's move on then to the approval of the minutes and everything I've said up till now on that. Commissioner Clifford?
I move to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2017.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegge. Was that a second?
Nope.
Nope. Maybe it was Commissioner Cooper who... Yep. All right, Commissioner Gordon?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Go ahead and get votes on that. Looks like I have five votes in favor with... Well, six. Thank you. So that was unanimously approved. Next item I have on the agenda is designation of liaison to city council meeting of September 25th, 2017. And I have Commissioner Clifford's name in parentheses here.
Yes, it's really just a reminder that the accessory dwelling unit item was continued to the 25th and that Commissioner Clifford has already confirmed that he can attend that meeting.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I would... I am coming back Monday morning from a trip, so it might be who was, in case something happens, to have an alternate available?
Thank you for raising that. Is there anybody who'd be available to serve as an alternate on this matter?
I'm out of town.
Yeah, I don't see anybody else who's available at the moment, but we'll take our chances, I guess.
Well, we'll just assume that we could be talking to people.
Okay, well, we'll hope for that. For lots of reasons besides the designation. So we've reached the part of the agenda then that's set aside for oral communications. And this is a portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that's not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I don't actually have any speaker cards, so I'm not aware that anybody actually wants to address the commission. If you do, please let me know now. All right, seeing no one, we're just going to go ahead and move along. We have no consent items, and we're going to move on then to consideration items. The first item is a library update. And this item is described as providing direction on land use planning site selection criteria to the Library Advisory Committee to contribute toward recommendations for city council on appropriate locations for the construction of a new Pacifica library. The recommended action is to approve a recommendation to the city council. And I guess then we'll go ahead and accept a staff report at this time.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Assistant Planner Robert Smith, and I'll be giving the presentation on the new Pacifica library update. To provide background on the process, the city has been working towards a new library for more than two decades now. In November of 2016, a bond measure was voted on and received majority support, but unfortunately did not receive the required two-thirds vote to pass. In March of this year, the council gave direction to the Library Advisory Committee to provide more information for the potential for a dual facility service model, to conduct public outreach for community feedback, to see what the community priorities were for a new library, and to consider all potential sites, including the Palmetto and Montecito site. To put the process in some context, for comparable cities within San Mateo County, library services range from between 0.6 square feet per person to 0.9 square feet... Sorry, per resident. And by comparison, Pacifica currently has only 0.3 square feet per resident. So that 10,500 square feet of facilities within the city is a long way short of what's been identified as being required of between 29,000 and 37,000 square feet for the city's So since March of this year, following the council direction, the project architect group four, the LAC members and staff have been undertaking extensive community outreach, which has included attending city events, installing interception kiosks, and hosting workshops and open houses. This has been in addition to the regular Library Advisory Committee meetings. And at those meetings, the LAC has provided site evaluations for all the sites which have been identified. So at this point, it would be useful to hand you over to the Chair of the LAC, Cindy Abbott, to give you more insight into the site evaluation process and how the sites have been narrowed down.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and public. You're now in my hands. You've been handed over. This map here shows the 22 library sites that came out of public meetings, ideas, brainstorm sessions, that were held in a variety of forums, as well as suggested locations brought to the table by members of the Library Advisory Committee. And as you can see, it's pretty extensive. There are 22 sites on that list, which includes those three that are called out from the map. And it's a mix of sites that are city-owned, other public agency sites, including the school district, Caltrans property, other public agencies here in town, and some private We went through a process once those sites were identified, and the Library Advisory Committee was giving scorecards. We ranked sites on a scale of one, two, and three, based on an evaluation matrix that was also determined at those public meetings and at the Library Advisory Committee meetings. And the LAC members scored it on accessibility, site capacity, economic impact, synergy, and environment. We did not rank it based on availability or site capacity and cost. We left that to our experts on city staff and our consultants. And this is the matrix that we ended up with for each site. The scores of the Library Advisory Committee were collated by staff, and they were ranked here on the grid. As a result of this process... Back up. As a result of this process, some sites were eliminated rather quickly, such as the IBL library, where really the capacity of that site was just too small, and there's really not room for expansion at that property. The school district headquarters, for example, was eliminated in this round in that accessibility is already not excellent today in that intersection, so we didn't think that we should be adding more traffic to that area. What we ended up with then was this list of nine... Eight potential sites. And as you can see, they're coded by if they're city-owned property, school district, if they're private. And we also have them grouped by geographic location in either north or south Pacifica. Along the way, we checked in quite frequently. I'd like to share with you, with the public, those that attended our meetings had a number of times where we asked for their input, asked for their thoughts on each of the different sites. And each time that they asked, we received good feedback. And they also shared that they thought that the process was well thought out and appropriate for what we were trying to accomplish. At our last meeting, just last week, we took those remaining sites and put them in tiers. And the top sites that the Library Advisory Committee voted on was the existing Sharp Park Library on Hilton Way, the portion of the former wastewater treatment site on the corner of Palmetto and Montecito. And in agreement with the instructions that we received from city council to remain being open to multiple locations, the existing Sanchez Library has continued on the first tier of lists as well. Second tier that we'd like your input on, that we did not drop but didn't rank as high, was the Corporation Yard on Malagra. There are some concerns that that site doesn't really have, while it's on an off-ramp, it doesn't really meet some of the potential of economic viability and trying to create a sustainable environment in that part of Pacifica, and it's also kind of a difficult traffic site. We left the City Hall site on the list for city council's potential discussion in keeping with the council's overall goals for the year, where city facilities are in a state of disrepair, though there was concern by the Library Advisory Committee to couple that site with the library project. A second-tier site is also the tennis courts at Oceana High School. We have not been able to be in touch with the new superintendent of schools, and we also had some concerns about the economic viability of that area if we were trying to use the library as a hub for economic development. Back to Rob.
Thank you, Cindy. So to go into a bit more detail on the Tier One and Tier Two sites, the existing Sharp Park Library at Hilton Way, the proposal for that 31,000-square-foot lot is for a 30,000-square-foot building, which would be formed of 25,000-square-feet library and 5,000-square-foot community room. The next site is the Palmetto-Montecito site. That 32,000-square-foot lot would allow a 36,000-square-foot library with 31,000 square feet of library and 5,000 of community room. The final Tier One site is the Sanchez Library. As Cindy mentioned, plans for the library are largely dependent on the service model discussions and information gathering by the LAC. The site has the potential to be refurbished and reused, but some service models may allow its expansion and rearrangement of the parking facilities. Within the Tier Two sites, the first site to examine is the City Hall site. The larger of the two options on this site would be for a 52,000-square-foot building, which would house a 16,000-square-foot city hall in addition to the 31,000-square-foot library and the 5,000-square-foot community room. So the 28,000-square-foot lot in option two would provide 60... Sorry, 36,000-square-foot building with the same size library and community room. Corporation Yard on Malagra Drive is a 36,500-square-foot site, would allow for 30,000-square-foot building with 25,000 square feet of library and 5,000 of community room. And then the final site, Oceana, would have the same size community room, same size library, and the building would be 36,000 square feet. And this would be a portion of the larger school site, and has been estimated as an 82,000-square-foot portion of that site. So finally, staff requesting that the Planning Commission provides feedback to the LAC and a recommendation to city council regarding the general plan, zoning, and any other planning policies, planning policy considerations for both the Tier One and Tier Two sites. Prior to providing feedback, the commission may wish to ask questions of both the project architect and the LAC chair, both of which are available this evening for questions, if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I'm wondering if any of the commissioners have any questions or clarifying points that they wanted to make at this point. Commissioner Cooper?
You have a couple of questions to ask. Most of these sites that you're proposing are well above 30,000 feet or around 30,000 square feet. If you were to take just a general population consensus at, let's just say we're at 40,000 people by 2040, you're assuming we're 41, and you multiply it times .6, you get 24,000 square feet. The current libraries that we have are 10,000 square feet, and let's assume that we keep one of those libraries. Wherever it's built, if we build one on the north side or the south side, I would assume that the community would want one local library still to be present. So that brings it down to about 19,000 square feet. Was there any thought to making any of the buildings a little bit smaller than what you've proposed here? It seems like all the facilities that you're proposing are rather large in its application.
The square footage that's been identified, the range between 29,000 square feet and 37,000 square feet is based on the population size in 2040 of 41,000 people. So the...
Using a standard that's above the .6, the lowest one in San Mateo, I think you used a .7 standard rather than a .6 standard.
Correct. Yeah, from the 2014 needs assessment, identified the... What the population would be and what the relative size of the library should be according to that population.
So all of the options that you've selected here are for a 30,000-square-foot building would assume that we're closing both libraries. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Then why would we choose a library that's larger than what our needs are? If you say it's 29,000 square feet and we shut one of the libraries down, then we're at a need of 24,000 square feet. All the buildings that I've seen are way above 30,000 square feet.
So if I could add the...
Sure.
The math scene that you're seeing in the presentation is just providing a round number and to make it consistent between all the sites. So there's just... There's not some variability there. The actual industry standard is .9 square feet per person. And so if that was a best-case scenario, you know, money's not an object, that would be what expert library designers would recommend.
Is that what San Francisco's at?
I don't know what San Francisco's at, but that was from an Anderson Brulee... I think I'm pronouncing that correctly. Analysis that was done for this community. Knowing that not all communities can realistically achieve that number, we went ahead and looked at similarly sized cities in San Mateo County and used what we considered to be probably a more realistic ratio when you consider cost and site constraints. I would also add that the Sanchez Library is 4,000 square feet, so that's kind of where the breakdown is. And when you have two libraries, there's actually redundancies that are necessary. So that's why you may see that some of the numbers, when you're doing the math, doesn't work out, because there's going to be some areas that both libraries need to have.
Right. I mean, I guess when, you know, I look at the sites and I look at the development of the sites, there's a difference between making a library that's a focal point of your community versus functioning for your community. And I guess, what are we trying to build? I was involved in quite a few library buildings in San Francisco, and they're phenomenal. They're phenomenal facilities. All the green portions of the buildings, green roofs, everything. And they're wonderful, but they can afford those. So I kind of look at, well, what does our community need and what can we afford? I'm a big proponent of taking a lot of the commercial aspect out of a library and making it more of a city function. So I like the City Hall site, in my opinion. I think that if you were to consolidate city services, that would be a good place. If you had to pick up business, your children could go to the library and wait for you, or if you were there, you could pick up some books while you're there. So that, to me, is a site... I do agree with you on the other two sites for the Tier Two, that those are kind of not in a very good location, but I do like the City Hall site. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the library site at Oceana High School and the tennis courts. How did the tennis courts proposal come to you? Was it... Is the school considering getting rid of the tennis courts, or is that just something that was...
Community brainstorm.
Community brainstorm. Okay.
Visible location at an intersection, available, you know, a large enough space.
Okay.
So it is not something with the school district having just appointed a new superintendent. There has not been connection yet.
Okay.
But again, we tossed everything out there. If you look at the list of 22, we had The Rock on that list, we had The Quarry on the list, we had, you know, just anything that anybody could think of as a possible location.
Okay. Thanks.
Not seeing any other lights, I guess I had a question. I was curious about the Beach Boulevard site, and I was curious about how that... And I might be a little behind admittedly, but how that would square with sort of some of the proposals that have been, you know, out there regarding the possibility of a hotel and whether or not that would be integrated on the same site or if this... And I recognize that probably a lot of unanswered questions, but I was very curious about that as I was looking at the staff report.
Yeah, again, the site evaluation process is trying to identify as many sites as possible, so trying to spread the net widely. In terms of the developability of that site, there is still an opportunity for having a library there, so it's still part of the consideration. And as part of the overall evaluation and feedback from Planning Commission, it would be useful to get your thoughts on each individual site.
Well, I guess my question is the extent to which that could be integrated into a hotel if ultimately it went that direction.
So we are continuing, and that's why we're trying to note the name of the street, so it's not the Beach Boulevard, the front part here...
Right.
...that we're sitting in. It is the corner of Montecito and Palmetto.
Okay, so the idea is those things could happen in tandem.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegge?
I have a question on the Pacifica library evaluation metrics. What is synergy connectivity?
What's around the location? You know, does it tie into economic development, or is it sitting out all by itself? So is it accessible? So there's some overlap there with some of the other metrics, but we wanted to make sure it was in a place where people could get to and that it added value to the area.
And then economic impact would add?
We've talked about, and in our Library Advisory Committee meetings, we've heard a lot about the economic value of a library to a city. You know, that was part of the original proposal of being an anchor for the Palmetto redevelopment, where it brings foot traffic, it brings people to the area, and then people also go outside, walk and take part in other things in the areas. So that's why a location potentially like the Corporation Yard doesn't... Didn't hit high on that criteria.
I noticed one evaluation metrics item that's missing attribute. I'd call it either opportunity cost or replacement cost of services. Several of these locations, this location, City Hall, have costs associated with displacing the current city-run services on that site. I'm curious if those are incorporated in the cost attribute?
We have two different models for locations where... So granular costs have not been done yet. We didn't want to have staff and the consultant work on costs for a list of 22 sites, you know, particularly when a number of them were not viable. So we're looking at them creating those for the much shorter list. And part of that would include the cost for replacing facilities.
And I would...
And it also includes parking. So that's been a key consideration for things. For example, the parking lot that's been suggested from time to time on Francisco, when you actually looked at that site, when the consultants put the block plans on that, it did not have appropriate room for parking in that area.
I was just going to add that the replacement or displacement costs that you mentioned is part of the reason why those Tier Two sites are in the Tier Two, because of the added complexity of those costs to the project.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Commissioner Cooper that the City Hall site, all things being equal, offers a lot of opportunities. Our City Hall's kind of a disgrace. And, you know, I read a brief analysis by First City Manager Carl Baldwin, saying he preferred that site, and I really hadn't thought about it prior to that. But his position was not to break up the commercial district on Palmetto with a library. And that was in The Tribune a couple of weeks ago. But I like the City Hall location. I still like the city-owned lot between Thai Restaurant and the Little Brown Church there. It's significantly bigger than several of the other locations here that got greenlit. And I wish you the best of luck and hope you'll find a solution that's palatable to voters. Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for this presentation. It's been interesting. And thanks for your work on it to date. I'm sure you're being excellently compensated.
Just like you.
Just like us. My first question, I just... I kind of want to get a sort of a lay of the land. We're using the .7 as the industry standard that the planning director mentioned, so we're looking at targeting more or less in the 30,000-square-foot-ish, like 34,000, 35,000? Is that kind of the goal? And current... And our current two sort of branch libraries are... What did you say again? So the Sanchez is what?
The Sanchez... Sorry. Sanchez is 4,500 square feet.
4,500.
7,000.
And Sharp Park?
Grounded at Sharp Park, so a total of 11,000 square feet.
Okay.
Split between the two, and again, there is quite a bit of redundancy. You need bathrooms everywhere.
Right. So, okay, so we are 11, you know, 20,000 and change square feet short. Is the idea that a site being selected, the... Let's say a site was selected that provided in the, whatever, 25,000 to 35,000-square-foot range. What would be the idea with the disposition... With the state of the current branches? Or is that also kind of up in the air?
So the council's direction is to most likely... We'll definitely replace the Sharp Park Library. So in addition to just being small, it's no longer meeting current code standards, the building itself. And so that needs to be replaced, whether or not it's on that site or a different site. And the Sanchez Library, the direction has been to continue to consider that to be a service location for the library. And that facility's 4,000 square feet, as we mentioned, and will require some renovation if it's to stay in its current state for accessibility, but it's still considered a code... largely code-compliant structure.
Okay, that's really helpful. So you're talking... So we're really talking about potentially keeping Sanchez, but Sharp Park has to be either renovated completely or else moved... Or else?
It's the state that it's in is it actually would be perhaps potentially more costly to renovate it and add on to it than to kind of start from scratch there.
Okay, okay. So, okay. Then... Let me get this straight. And Sanchez doesn't make a lot of sense to be the spot, partly because of the location. It's in the very, very southern part of the city. So really, in terms of geography, that's not a great idea, even though I understand it's a Tier One option. Sort of my first response is, ah, it doesn't make a lot of sense, because it's so far. More central location is good. I'm concerned about the tennis courts being identified, since it's already serving, you know, a great purpose for the... To the public in terms of offering recreation, although the courts are slanted, which is depressing. They are tilted like this. Whoever built that, I could kill you. Anyway, so I'm not too fond of that one in the Tier Two land. But in terms of the... So it sounds like what we're looking for is to... A site, one site, that will provide in the 30,000-square-ish range, that's central... that's centrally located in the city. I guess that's, that's kind of a key issue. And, okay, and I'll just take a step back here and-
All right. I think we'll come back at some point, once you've heard from the public, to perhaps actually do something a little more systematic. I was really just hoping to get comments and clarifications at this point.
Can I add one thing? You know, while we're talking about square footages, the next step of what the Library Advisory Committee will be working on is the service module, models, and what services will be in what library. So that's going to really impinge on then how many, how many square foot, feet are needed to do that. So we know Sharp Park or Sanchez in its current state is very small, so what can we do in that footprint? Should we extend it a little bit, but still it will never be a full-service library. So we are going to be meeting with staff and others to talk about service models a little bit more, to see how that all, you know, divides up between buildings. And that's why we're staying at a much higher level as far as what the square footage is today, and not finalizing a 27 and, you know, 500 square foot library versus 32,000 at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, one, I-
I don't have a lot of questions because I'm actually a member of the committee now, and I did- And since everybody else has, has mentioned a preference, I'm going to mention that my preference is to put it in where the existing Sharp Park Library is, based on some of the information that I've gotten previously. It's a public facility, it's already a library. It, in terms of economic benefits, these similar, it would, its benefits would be similar to the Palmetto, Montecito site, but at the same time, it is out of the tsunami's hill because it is up on the hill. So that's, and, and because you can also close off Hilton at that end and actually expand the library out over, over the street, so you're not necessarily limited to the existing site. You could actually make it, make it fit up there better, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I saw that the Beach Boulevard project was submitted to the California Coastal Commission. Have any other variants of this project been submitted to the Coastal Commission?
The previous City Council decision on the site evaluated the general plan and zoning code specifications on that site, but no other applications have come forward since that time.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. I think at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, or at least open the, I don't know if it's really a public hearing, but open the matter for a public comment if there is any. I don't have any speaker cards, so perhaps that's an indication that there's nobody who wishes to speak to this item. I will just double check. Again, I don't see any speaker cards, so I guess that means we'll just go ahead and bring it back to the commission. And again, our particular requested action tonight was to provide feedback to staff in the LAC regarding the general plan, zoning code, and planning policy for each of the potential library sites identified. Don't know if there's a particular place in the staff report, a particular matrix area that might help us kind of march through this in some sort of a systematic way. I guess we can all just sort of flip pages to the potential sites that we have here and move forward that way. And I think the report actually does a good job of kind of laying out the general plan and the zoning for each site. And I'm a little fuzzy candidly on what it is you, you would like from us with respect to planning policy. What kinds of feedback would be helpful to address that point?
If you're looking for site evaluation criteria, we could use the example for the site evaluation matrix that was given to the LAC members, but more specifically, what we were hoping to achieve this evening is to get direction on the general plan and zoning code specifically for each individual site. So if I may, we could move through the individual sites, and if you have specific comments from a general plan or zoning code perspective, that might be useful.
And I have a, perhaps an alternative also. You know, you, you, you guys at the Planning Commission are the subjectmatic experts on land use matters. So for the, the Tier One and Tier Two sites, if there's anything that you can think of that perhaps hasn't come to mind so far during the LAC's public outreach process that the LAC does need to take into consideration, that would be great to hear now, such as, are there perhaps traffic or parking impacts, neighborhood impacts that perhaps we haven't identified yet? I think that we are fairly confident that the zoning and general plan isn't going to be an issue for each of the identified sites.
Right.
But if there is anything else that, that you guys can think of, that might be a little bit more efficient.
Okay, well, you know what? I see a ton of light, so it looks like there's probably all sorts of interesting feedback we're going to get here, or at least feedback of some sort. Commissioner Cooper?
Okay, just having done some of the other library sites and just kind of go through the different areas. I think the Oceana High School site is an interesting location. I think it's central to a lot of the community and a lot of the development. I'm genuinely concerned with how that would offset some of the facilities at Oceana, and then the cooperation you might not get or get from the Jefferson Union High School District might be of, of issue. But it's right there on the Samtrans line, it's right there close to people who might use the line. There's a senior center that's close there, so I think that's a, a good location. And I also think you could probably facilitate parking. That is one of the huge areas that you're going to, you're going to have problems with. People visiting the library on foot is obviously a big one, cars, you know, maybe half-half, depending on who's going to go there. But public transportation is going to be key. I'm not a fan of the Corporation Yard or the parking lot. The Sharp Park Library site, again, that's a pretty central location. I think there's a lot that can be done with that site. I think I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Clifford. I think that that is a good location for, for a library. It's kind of offset from people going to the beach. You're not going to get the influx of parking that you're going to compete with the beach parking at the same time. It is up on a hill, so it's a difficult walk. So I would look at the access to, to the library. I mean, as much as it's only up there, for me, it's relatively easy, but for a senior citizen or a child, and getting around that area is a little bit difficult. So maybe if you had a subterranean parking structure that went in there and made it easier for people to get in there, maybe that might be easier. I'm not a fan of the Beach Boulevard site. Again, from an economic standpoint, I think you're trying to mix oranges and apples with, with a, a purpose for commercial and a library use. I think there's already a lot of traffic down here as it is. I think there's a much better use for the site. Again, that's my opinion. And I think the City Hall site is a, is a good location as well. I think it's far enough off the beach where you're not going to compete with parking. But again, I think, parking is an issue, because it is, I mean, we've, we've had other projects down here, people complaining about, hey, you know, it's going to impact my parking, I can't go to my shop, or I can't go to my food establishment because there's no parking available. So you'd have to incorporate it with a parking structure. I like the idea of combining it with City Hall. I think that's, to have all the city services in one area, I think is good. But I also would look at downsizing. Libraries have changed over the days. We no longer, you know, I think, I think children use a library a lot, families use a library a lot, it's a great reading environment. The community building that we have is, to me, probably an overused building. We need more space. Our community needs this, this facility, not just for the library, but also to, for a gathering place. So I think that's probably, for me, that's a very big component of the library. But I certainly think that the amount of stacks of books that we have now is not, it's how I grew up, but it's not how the kids grow up. They're not, they're not going and getting books anymore. They're going off their Kindles, they want a place that they can use the computers, they want a place that they can do their research. So I, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Gordon?
You know, I actually wasn't prepared to go down a list like Commissioner Cooper was, but is that the stage we're at right now?
It sounds like that's probably going to be the most useful. Did you want me to skip over and come back?
Skip, skip me, yeah.
All right, I'll turn your light back on, and we'll go to Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I think I'll just limit my remark, well, I'll just go through. I think there's really two site, there's two sites that I think are, are viable, and that would be the Sharp Park Library site. I'm in agreement with Commissioners Clifford and Cooper on that one. I, I think because there's accessibility, there's probably going to be available parking if we can work with the developer of the wastewater treatment system. And the, so that's, that's probably, that and the, and the existing, the Palmetto, Montecito site. I'm, I still think that that is a viable option. I would actually put that as my second. Stepping back, I'm comfortable with the, with following the recommendation that has been put forth, about a 30,000 square foot or so library. I think a lot of work's gone in probably into that recommendation, and I'm not, I'm comfortable to, to go along with that. So I think both those sites fit that kind of square footage. Then, the City Hall option's intriguing, but I think that the parking and circulation is a real issue with that one. I'll note that, you know, there's, there's some potential parking next to it. There's, there's that city parking lot next to the Thai Restaurant, but we're already using that. That, that parking lot, we kind of were taking into consideration when we approved the new building next to the old Toro Loco Restaurant. We're saying that that building was going to require more parking, and one of the things we talked a lot about was putting signage up on that city lot to make sure people could go there. And so now we're, if that were the, the site of a library, now we're losing that parking. And so I just, I think we start to, it becomes a shell game, and I think we, I'm just worried about that. So, on, from a planning perspective. So I'm not a real fan of the City Hall site. And then there's the Corporation Yard, I'm in agreement with everybody, and that's, that's just too far out away from everything to really be a viable site. And there's traffic and circulation issues there. The Oceana High School site, I'm, I think it's just a non-starter. I think taking away the tennis courts would be incredibly controversial. I think it, I'm actually surprised that they would talk about taking away the tennis courts when you've got the old baseball field next to it, which would be the, I think the, if you were going to go there, the logical spot. But even there, I think, I just see parking and circulation issues, and it is kind of far away from, if you are trying to make this some sort of an economic driver, you're just putting it too far away from that. So it, I just don't see that one at all. And then the Sanchez Library, I'm in agreement that it's putting the big library in the southernmost part of town is not a good idea, so.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I'm going to first start off with a question for staff, and that is, I know we're still working with the old general plan, and I know that we're still working on a new general plan. Do you anticipate anything in the new general plan that would affect the sites that have been mentioned?
No.
I've already mentioned my number one preference, which is the need to replace the existing Sharp Park site. And then my number two would be to keep, put it on the Palmetto, Montecito site, although that's, that's a distant two for me. So I really have a one, I'm really a one-shot person on that. Most of the other sites and the City Hall combination all have dropped access, as I'm concerned. The Corporate-
The Corporate Yard, the City Hall, all of those things we were going to, we would have to also fund replacements for.
Even if it's inside the same building that the library is in, that's going to increase the cost, which in all likelihood is going to be the issue for the voters. So I'm, I'm looking for a site the city owns that meets the criteria, which is, that it has positive economic impact on our, the new street scape that we're spending a lot of money to create, plus being a very good useful library, a central location. That, that's why I personally have narrowed it down to site, to, to the one site with a callback to the Palmetto, the, the other site.
Yes.
Montecito.
Yeah, Palmetto and Montecito. Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Gordon, I'm going to come back to you.
Oh, there's still two left before me. Oh, oh, did Dan, did, did you go?
I was just coming back to you because I was just trying to-
Oh, you're being kind.
Keep everything off to my left here.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I, I definitely agree with what Commissioner Clifford just said about, the site should really integrate with Palmetto's street scape plan. So, that's like, that's a primary consideration from my perspective. And that, for me, that really focuses on, on the Sharp Park site and the Beach Boulevard site. Interestingly, that, you know, this, I'm, I'm way out of my, my league here, but the Sharp Park site seems like it would be, I mean, in terms of funding it, I know funding the, funding the construction is going to be a big issue for the city. It would be more, has the city considered maybe even selling the Sharp Park site and using those proceeds to fund the, the, a building at Beach Boulevard? You know, that would be kind of, I know we're not supposed to talk about economic plans, but it's just, just in terms of the location of the Sharp Park, it, it's elevated, it's got a great, a, a view of the ocean. I mean, that's going to have, that's going to be so economically valuable to a developer in a way that, you know, the other sites might not be. But anyway, that's just a footnote. Go ahead. You're just dying.
I, I was just going to say that if, if the, if the, the site selected is not the Sharp Park site, and so there's no longer a library there, yes, that is part of the, the future discussion for City Council to have as to what to do with that site, including possibly selling, selling it.
Yeah. So I guess that would be my number one choice, would be to, the Beach Boulevard site, with the, with the notion of, of funding that partially through the sale of the Sharp Park site. But if people don't go for that, then it does make sense. I agree with Commissioner Clifford, the Sharp Park is number one. I just see more value in it, I just see more value in, 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 in selling it, the city selling it, and, and funding, and funding the construction that way. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm against the other, most of the other sites for the, for the reasons already mentioned, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Stedgen, I'm going to come back to you and see if you've got anything you want to add to the mix.
You know, I've, I've heard some rumors that the, the Friend Group is not interested in having the library at the 2212 Beach Boulevard location. Is there any accuracy to that?
If council decides that that's not where the library would go, there is some interest in expanding the size of the hotel.
But the Friend Group has not determined-
We haven't moved far, far enough in negotiations.
I, I seem to remember a November 2015 letter from the Coastal Commission essentially dunning subterranean parking on the, on the shoreline there. Is that still valid?
Is it, is it the letter that was about the, this, this site, or a different project?
I believe so, yeah.
And they, and you're saying that they said they did not want subterranean parking?
That's my understanding, yeah.
I don't recall that comment specifically, but I, but I do recall comments that the design needs to be such that adaptation planning is taken into account, but not that they said it absolutely could not be subterranean.
I agree, there's a couple here that are immediately off the list. The tennis courts at Oceana, they serve a useful purpose. The Corporation Yard, we'd have to move that somewhere else. I tend to think that the 2212 Beach Boulevard location has already been voted on and did not meet the voters' expectations. The existing Sharp Park Library is a, is a very interesting potential one. You know, if that site is smaller than the location on Francisco, between the Thai Restaurant and the Little Brown Church, but if, if it can be adapted in a way that maximizes the library there while still, you know, maintaining City Hall, and we don't have to immediately pay for a new City Hall, that would seem to be a, a win for us. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Well, I, I just have a couple of observations I'll, I'll share as well. One is, I recognize that from earlier slides, that there's a, sort of this, I guess we're kind of focusing on this with sort of the assumption that we'd be talking about the- kind of focusing on this with sort of the assumption that we'd be talking about the two libraries, one in the, one in the south there. But I do believe that that raises the issue of a lot of redundancy, and I'm not necessarily, myself, for what it's worth, necessarily in favor of sort of moving forward with two libraries, recognizing that perhaps that ship has sailed. My own sort of notion, as I look at, again, I think, beginning on page 100 is sort of where, and of course, there's an extract of it, I guess, in page 16 of the packet, but sort of looking through the evaluation matrix there, you know, I can't help but notice that the Beach Boulevard site scores very highly, and I think for, you know, some obvious reasons, including circulation, including accessibility. I think that from a land use perspective, that is a very advantageous and favorable site. So that would, and for what it's worth, it yields certainly the highest score on the evaluation matrix. And again, I think from a land use perspective, in addition to the various, you know, which, you know, finds itself reflected in the matrix, this is, I think, the superior site. I don't know that it's necessarily a foregone conclusion that voters wouldn't support this. I think the other sites are disadvantageous, the Oceana High School site for practical legal reasons, the fact that the school district hasn't surplus it, and it's not clear that they'd want to. And there probably would be some maybe disadvantages to having that much circulation taking place right next to a school camp as it's trying to conduct school business. And I think my colleagues have raised concerns about some of the other sites. I think the site that comes closest in my mind to the superiority of the Beach Boulevard site would probably be the existing Sharp Park library, although it does seem to me that there are probably some higher and better uses of that site that could be considered. So what else can we share with you that would be helpful as you all are moving forward?
I think we have the direction that we need from you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to follow up before we end this with next steps. So next, the city will have a community meeting on the 28th, that's a Thursday, at the Community Center, from, open house from 4:00 to 7:00, I think, I'm looking at Dawn, the audience. And then there'll be a workshop starting at 7:00. We will be at the Fog Fest in the city booth, so to get additional feedback and provide community information about the project. We will be at the Farmer's Market on October 4th with a kiosk for public information. The Library Advisory Committee's next meeting is October 11th, which is open to the public. And we have a report to City Council, which will incorporate the discussion this evening on October 23rd scheduled.
Thank you. Is there any possible need for a liaison? Not that I'm volunteering necessarily for it, but perhaps we could talk about whether or not a liaison might be appropriate for the October 23rd meeting.
Well, Commissioner Clifford is the LAC liaison, so he would probably.
Once again. Fantastic.
Anyone is quite welcome to come and?
We'll have your back. Perfect.
And be in the back room.
Yeah, thank you.
I have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm just as curious, Tina, if anybody has done any economic analysis? I know that, you know, we talk about the site over here, and if we were not to build a library there, what is the offsetting commercial value of that site per year in a tax type of situation versus a non-revenue generating site like a library? I mean, it seemed to me that there would be a cost benefit analysis that would need to be done.
I have, I am not aware that that analysis has been done today.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I think then that will take care of that item. We'll move on to a continued public hearing. This is a CDP 38517, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 38517, filed by Adeline Sullivan on behalf of Pacific Views Villas to modify existing location of the coastal path at 202-224 Palmetto Avenue. The recommended action on this is to continue it to October 2nd, 2017. Is that, is that correct?
That is the recommended action. I asked Rob to stay for this item because we did receive some recent communication from the Coastal Commission that just came in today, and I don't know if that's still an appropriate date, or if we want to not continue it to a date certain and renotice this item.
The Coastal Commission are asking specific questions about the implication of moving the path and the impact that that will have on the bluff, so they may potentially ask for additional information.
I see. So do you think it might make sense to continue this to a date to be determined?
I think that would be sensible.
Yes.
Okay. Well, perhaps that's what we'll do. All right, this is for the next item. Excellent. So it looks like, is that Commissioner Clifford?
I would move to continue this item to a date to be determined.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'll take the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a second. Why don't we go ahead and vote? Okay, so that's been unanimously approved, this matter will be continued. I just wanted to note before we move on to the next item, and this is a reference back to item number one. I did have correspondence here, I noted that were no public comments, but we did in fact have an email dated Sunday, September 17, 2017, from Bill Collins. I wanted to note that all members of the Commission received this email and had the opportunity to read it prior to consideration of the item. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you.
Which takes us to item number three, which is a new public hearing, and this is Site Development Permit PSD 81717, Coastal Development Permit CDP 38517, Use Permit UP 8317, Sign Permit S 12317, Parking Exception PE 17117, and Heritage Tree Removal Authorization submitted by Brian Brinkman of Consult Design Build, Inc. for construction of a two-story mixed-use building comprised of 3,213 square feet gross, leasable area at ground floor in four one-bedroom apartments totaling 3,508 square feet living area at second floor, and various other matters. And this is at, let's see here, the Pedro?
San Pedro Avenue.
It's Pedro Point Shopping Center, north side of San Pedro Avenue, approximately 280 feet east of the intersection of San Pedro Avenue and Grand Avenue, Assessor Parcel Number 023072110 in Pacifica. The recommended SECA status on this is a Class III categorical exemption, SECA Guideline Section 15303, and the recommended action of staff is that we approve this matter as conditioned. I guess then we'll go ahead and take a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock from the Planning Department. The mixed-use commercial and residential project before you for consideration has several components and requires various entitlements from the Commission as outlined in the agenda heading. The project includes a ground floor commercial area, four apartments at the upper floor, an outdoor seating area with alcohol service and amplified music, a sign program with freestanding sign, and removal of three heritage trees. The applicant has also requested authorization for office use in up to one-third of the ground floor commercial area to accommodate a potential future office tenant, and a parking exception for several aspects of the project. The parking exception includes the number of spaces for the currently proposed retail office and residential components of the project, for the number of spaces for a potential future restaurant tenant, for covered parking for the residential component of the project, and for the landscaped median requirement of the city's parking standards. When evaluating all of the various components and the give and take that's required on this small site, it's staff's opinion that, on balance and as conditioned in the draft resolution of approval, the project would comply with general plan and local coastal plan narratives and policies, which call for making the Pedro Point Shopping Center an attractive, visitor-serving, use-oriented to its coastal setting, and which also call for creating low and moderate income housing opportunities in the coastal zone. Staff recommends approval of the project by adopting the attached resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask members of the Commission whether or not they have any questions or comments for, again, for clarification at this point. Commissioner Clifford?
My first question is going to be about the parking. And I wanted to, I'm wondering how you would write that 16 sites, which parking sites would be okay, for a building that potentially has a restaurant and that could be any 32 or 64 sites needed? So if you could explain that to me, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So in evaluating the project, staff focused on the findings that the Commission would need to make. And so the requirement for granting a parking exception is to determine that there's an unusual hardship or practical difficulty. And so I think it's based on the fact that it's a relatively small site, 12,000 square feet roughly for a commercial project. There are certain financial feasibility requirements of the project in order for it to pencil out for the applicant. And there are rather stringent parking requirements for restaurant uses. There are site landscaping requirements, there's various site design requirements, sidewalks, pathways, et cetera. And so when trying to get all of those onto a site that's relatively small for the type of development, it was based on the practical hardships in particular to providing all of the parking, as compared to some judgment saying, we think it will be okay to provide the parking. And so when you look at the finding that needs to be made, it was based on that analysis, the hardships and the practical difficulties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
It looks like a lot of work went into this report, so, so thank you. I do have a couple of questions, though. One of my big questions is just the general zoning of this area. I see a large residential component of it, knowing that area and that shopping center, and what happens as a visitor-serving shopping center. And if you could explain to me why the residential component is a valid component within this zoning district, noting that the general plan says "commercial" and the zoning map says "C2-CZ," kind of more of a combined?
Sure. The general plan, by virtue of it being a commercial designation, speaks primarily about commercial-oriented uses. However, the commercial designation in the general plan also allows residential completely above the ground floor, above ground floor commercial in the same building, at a density not to exceed one unit per 2,000 square feet of lot area. The zoning similarly has that same provision for mixed use upon approval of a use permit. And so the residential component is clearly contemplated in the general plan and in the zoning designation within the C2 zoning district.
And then, so accompanying that question then would be the parking for the residential component and how that's differentiated from the commercial areas?
I'm not sure I understand. In this case, the parking is proposed to be provided in a joint parking lot. On a larger site, it may be possible to segregate those and provide residential-specific parking and commercial-specific parking. Sort of the general theme in analyzing this project, in particular for the parking-related components, the site is small, and when you add in minimum, you know, safe and zoning requirements for drive aisles and parking stall dimensions and so forth, you ultimately result in a very congested and difficult-to-construct parking situation. And so that's why I suspect the applicant's proposed a combined parking lot for residential and commercial uses, as well as has sought the parking exception for various components of the project.
Was there any discussion on potentially putting the parking in the back and downsizing the building? I mean, to separate that use? I mean, typically when I see a combined type of unit, there's designated commercial parking and there's designated residential parking. To mix them so internally seems to be a little difficult.
Sure. I certainly understand, you know, in most cases, the height of planning principles would maybe be to separate these and provide a more private-oriented residential parking area. Unfortunately, the applicant has indicated he was not able to obtain mutual ingress and egress rights from the Pedro Point Shopping Center. And so all of the circulation driveways included would need to be provided on this particular parcel. So constructing more than one driveway, for instance, to have a separate access for residential parking, perhaps with garages or carports in the back of the site, would take up a significant amount of the frontage, probably wouldn't reach the, probably wouldn't result in a preferred design orientation with the building being street-oriented, would make it look very much like a large parking lot and driveways on this very small site. So I think that was a driving design factor, most likely for the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Stedjink?
I'm concerned on the parking exception also. There's kind of a holy war going on on Pedro Point for parking. I drove by that exact location three times in the last week, and there was approximately eight vehicles parked in what would disappear with the installation of that driveway. So you're losing eight spots of parking along San Pedro, which are essentially parallel to the direction of traffic. And I looked at the Google map and tried to determine how many spots there actually are on all of Pedro Point up the hill. And it seems like we're removing a significant percentage of the total spots on Pedro Point with this one specific project. Do we know how many spots are on Pedro Point in total? And do we know how many spots will be removed by this project off of San Pedro?
We have not analyzed how many existing on-street parking spaces there may be throughout the entire neighborhood. This project, I'm not aware of where it would impact the loss of eight on-street parking spaces. The creation of the 25 and a half-foot wide driveway would result in perhaps one to two spaces, and there's maybe two to three more, given the recommendation for areas to be red-curved. So yes, there would be a small number of on-street spaces that would be eliminated. Do I think it would be eight spaces? I do not think the number would be that high. And I think it's important to note that this project has not created the existing parking impacts that may exist throughout the neighborhood. It's the previous existing development. And this project, you know, is expected to accommodate its parking demand where reasonably and practically can, except where there are unusual hardships and practical difficulties. And so that's what the applicant and staff's opinion has sought to do here, except for identified in the parking exception.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
I would like to know if it's possible for us as a commission to condition that the four parking spots actually be reserved for the apartments?
I don't, I don't think that that would be a problem. I'm already thinking about how to do it, but just adding that as a condition should not be a problem.
Because I don't want the residents to not have a place to park when they come home.
The only, I have, I considered that when making the staff recommendations, Commissioner Clifford. The only counterpoint I had in my mind where I didn't recommend it was the fact that in many cases, in particular throughout the week, the commercial business would be operating during the time that residents, most residents would probably be away at work, for example. And so we'd be losing four of the 16 spaces that were provided in the parking lot, perhaps having some sort of hours restriction, but the more you chop that up, the more difficult it becomes for the property owner to enforce. Are you going to end up towing your own customers' vehicles if they overstayed their, you know, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. stay in that space? So that's the reason I didn't recommend a parking restriction of that type. But it certainly is possible to reserve those spaces with a condition of approval.
I had also thought of different hours being available. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I actually had a question, not seeing any more lights, and this is just my, I guess, amnesia as I get a little older. I'm not remembering the specifics of the Anchor Inn project. It's referenced in the staff report. Could you remind me what that involves?
Certainly. It's located just across San Pedro Avenue on the upslope portion. You may recognize the chain-link fence and the gate that's there. It's currently unimproved and goes up. The Anchor Inn would be a four-unit detached motel project.
Yep.
And the Planning Commission approved it, I think, in 2016.
Not that long ago.
Yeah. Forgive me if I don't have the dates exactly. The Planning Department recently issued a building permit, and we would expect that project to begin construction relatively soon.
Excellent. Thanks. Actually, it looks like, do you have another comment, Commissioner Cooper?
Just from my own, I guess, interest, does this fall within the area that we specified for the dispensaries?
The marijuana overlay zoning district included the Pedro Point Shopping Center. Whether it included this parcel specifically, I'm not able to recall, but I suspect it probably did.
I think it did.
Commissioner Stedjink?
When you first look at this parcel, it's not immediately obvious that it's not just green space from the Pedro Point Shopping Center. It almost appears that there's another parcel a little farther north on the corner there. Are there any development plans for that parcel?
So you're talking about the one right on the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, so it looks like a parcel, but it's actually Caltrans right-of-way still. And so they have not, you know, designated that as surplus land, and so they would have to go through a process before that could be real property available for purchase and development.
Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any more lights at this point. I know we'll bring it back to the Commission in a bit, but I wanted to go ahead and take public comment on this matter. And I've got a couple of speaker cards here. The first is Danny Estraya, and then we'll have?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, I'm in such a hurry to move along here. We will, of course, hear from the applicant, and I think our ordinary practice is to afford 10 minutes for you to go ahead and present anything you care to.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Brinkman. I'm part of the applicant team here tonight. I'd like to first thank you Commissioners for your time tonight, to thank the planning staff for their- staff for their, for their feedback, ideas, assistance, and participation in this process, and in particular, Christian, for the very detailed staff report he's prepared. I'd also like to take the time to thank Sky Parker for his integral part in the ultimate design we have here today. Before you tonight is a project we are extremely excited about and have put a lot of time into. As you're aware, the project site is on a unique parcel that not only sits adjacent to and sort of within the existing Pedro Point Shopping Center, has good visibility from the highway as you enter or leave Pacifica from the south, and is one of the last properties that you pass as you enter the residential neighborhood of Pedro Point. From the outset, our desire was to create a project that was not only beneficial to Pacifica as a whole, but to be beneficial, provide an enhancement to both the existing residents on Pedro Point and to the overall experience to visitors to that part of the city. Please take note that the project before you today is vastly different from the one we originally submitted to the planning department. We've sat down with the planning department and other city staff numerous times and gone through our ideas, received their ideas and feedback on all aspects of the project until we've reached the design that we're reviewing today, which we are, and I believe the planning department is well excited for and proud of. As mentioned in the staff report, the proposed development has been designed to accommodate a variety of potential commercial tenants, to allow either a successful existing business within Pacifica to expand, or for a new business, whether it's a new business altogether or a national tenant, to come in and flourish. We've situated the, the building so that it has maximum visibility to draw people to the site and to the area, as well to, as well as to integrate well with the existing shopping center. We have the back of the house, as they call it, of the building aligned with the existing drive aisle of the existing shopping center where they use for, for loading. And we've also created an outdoor seating area that is adjacent to the existing outdoor seating area at the taproom to create that outdoor coastal atmosphere. We've also met with city staff and designed it to provide for the potential, if the shopping center was redeveloped in the future, that the orientation of the building is still in an optimum, optimal position for, for such redevelopment. The project also provides unique housing opportunities. The four one-bedroom apartments proposed will provide maximum flexibility in terms of demographics for middle-income residents that might not otherwise be able to live in the Pedro Point area. The four units will all have views to the ocean and have been oriented so that the entrances and the outdoor spaces, the balconies of the units are oriented away from the commercial use, so as to, to keep privacy there. Architecturally, we feel that we've come to a design that incorporates all elements of the project, whether it's the rustal coastal, the rustic coastal setting, or harmoniously blending of the commercial and residential components found not only within the building itself, but within the site's location as a link between the commercial and residential areas of Pedro Point. The building expresses all these characteristics, characteristics in a consistent and pleasing aesthetic. We look forward to hearing your thoughts on the project and are excited for this opportunity that we have to enhance the community. We've read through the conditions of approval in the staff report and are amenable to all of them. And then I'm going to hand it over to colleague Mike O'Connell to just touch on the parking a little.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike O'Connell. I'm the civil engineer for the project, and I just want to touch on, on, on the parking. You know, we're aware that it's kind of an issue in the neighborhood, although this project is not creating it necessarily. We think there's a solution and some other considerations to be made. So first, I think we want to look at, we looked at, there's about 430 houses within a half-mile of the site in the west Lindemar neighborhood, and there's about 240 homes in Pedro Point. So that's 670 houses. If you assume there's 2.2 people per house, which is kind of a conservative industry standard for a single-family home load factor, that's about 1,500 people within a half-mile of the site. So, you know, I think the project anticipates, you know, a lot of people walking to the retail use at that development, and I think that's part of the consideration for the parking One of the commissioners mentioned the parking at 195 Carmel. And about a year ago, we had that hearing, and we discussed potentially an in-lu parking The current zoning code kind of promotes free parking by virtue of the minimum parking requirements. And the, the issue is that the minimum parking requirements oftentimes hinders developments on sites, small sites and infill sites, mostly those are the sites that are left in Pacifica. The minimum parking requirements can also hinder, you know, adaptive reuse of existing buildings, and they make the infill sites kind of tricky to, to add the parking. So, you know, I think that's something that needs to be considered. There's a lot of advantages to that. It gives projects alternatives to parking. It can be used to fund public parking that can then be a shared use between, you know, different land uses that have different, their peak parking demand occurs at different times. So the shared parking is typically more utilized than a single-user private parking lot. It, it almost always results in better urban design because you don't need to break up storefronts with, with parking lots and drive aisles. Oftentimes, if you have like a parking garage, you'll see the first, the first floor of the parking garage has some retail uses on it. It requires fewer parking exceptions because they're just not needed if you have an in-lu So it's, it's kind of like an impact fee, like you would pay for, you know, roads and schools. It's similar because they require the developments to pay for the infrastructure, in this case, the parking, in order to get the building permits. And I know I'm, it's not directly related to this project, and I'm kind of on my in-lu parking fee soapbox here, but I'll get to the point in a minute. So another interesting concept about the, the parking fee is that it allows developments to reduce demand for parking rather than supplying more of it by, by way of financing public parking. And reforming this is inherently difficult because all of the parking requirements are built into the city's legislative ordinances. So, you know, I understand that that's, that's a, that can be a slow-moving process. But there is, there's a potential solution here that parking fees could be used for, and that's the Caltrans lot that someone mentioned earlier, which, you know, you don't necessarily need to purchase from Caltrans, but the city could, you know, come to some sort of agreement with them. It would be very simple and cost-effective to take that corner, clean it up, provide a base rock parking lot, and you could fit approximately 40 parking spots as like an overflow parking, you know, on the nice days. That, that seems to be when the issue is at its peak. So I actually have some sketches that I'll pass around for what that might, might look like, you know. And I think this project would be interested in paying an in-lu parking fee for the two spots if the city had an ordinance, say, within the next six months.
Thanks. Thank you. Looks like we'll go ahead and hand these out. All right. Thanks. Perhaps there'll be questions later, but I guess at this point, we'll move on to a public comment on the item. Looks like my first card is from Danny Estraya. He'll be followed by Serena Loomis.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. Before I speak, I do want to say that I know Mike Venesi, one of the partners in this development. I've known him since he was 17 and watched him grow up, and I'm very proud of his success in his profession and the beautiful family that he and Heather have made. It's been a joy to be his friend. But I do need to address this issue because I'm a resident of Pedro Point. And we've been talking a lot about the parking here, and I appreciate the positive aspects of this project. It is very exciting. But there's no escaping that we have a very, very serious problem with parking here in the Lindemar Beach area. We are a victim of our own success. And you may be aware, I expect you are, that every weekend now, the main parking lots are completely full, that the whole area on San Pedro Road from Highway 1 past the shopping center, past Ace Hardware, past Castle Kitchen, past Sato's Catering, on up San Pedro Road to Dan Man and beyond Dan Man, up Grand, up Livingston, up Kent, it's all being occupied by people who are coming from out of Pacifica to come to the beach here and go surfing. It's just extremely popular, very, very popular. And you may be aware of the issues that's happened the last couple of weeks where people were, couldn't find parking, and they parked along Highway 1 on the northbound direction on Highway 1 from Crespey Road heading south. So now the Pacifica Police has to take their resources to go out and put the no-parking signs. I just mention that because I just want to emphasize that more than just right on this corner here, the parking pressure is really intense. And in the shopping center there, beachgoers are taking up parking spaces from the clients, there are the merchants there, a grocery outlet, the restaurants there, and they don't have enough parking. So this is going to be taking parking away. You have four residential units. You can expect there's going to be eight cars going to be required for this parking here. Then on the weekends, when they're home, they're not away at their jobs, they're going to need to park their cars. It's going to add on to that parking burden throughout the Pedro Point area. It's a real concern. Pedro Point doesn't have good sidewalks everywhere. People need to walk in the street. And with all the additional traffic and the cars parked there, people are forced to park or to walk in the street, and it becomes a safety hazard because of that. Also, that area floods during the rains. Right there, there's a little creek that goes behind the shopping center. The addition of the building there is going to increase the runoff to San Pedro Road and increase the flooding. And even though it's flooding, it pools, and the pools last for several days, sometimes weeks, after the last rainstorm. So those are the concerns that I have about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estraya. Ms. Loomis, Serena Loomis.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So I just want to let you know, first of all, I own La Playa, which has been there for 25 years. I'm also a resident of Pedro Point, been here since 2005. You know, I have noticed there's obviously an increase of people that come into Pacifica and surf, obviously. I don't, however, feel like parking is that much of an issue consistently, if that makes sense. I do feel like, you know, there are those rare years, well, we'll have maybe three weekends consecutively of warm weather, where, okay, there's a bit of an issue with parking. However, if you go down the coast of Highway 1 into Half Moon Bay, all the way down to Santa Cruz, there are people parked up and down the side of the highway. So it's really not just a Pedro Point thing, it's more of a weather coastal thing altogether. Again, I think that this project holds a lot of value to our community. As a business owner in that shopping center, I would love to see something bring, you know, a business bring more foot traffic. And if they're providing, you know, one-bedroom apartments, that's even better. There are people in Pacifica that have been priced out of Pacifica at this point that grew up here. But this would allow them to actually come back in with their families, you know, or just a couple, get a foot in, right? They're renting, fine, whatever. But this, this will create a better community. The whole shopping center, you know, if you go to Half Moon Bay, they've done a really good job of having really beautiful structures and kind of grouping it together. I don't feel like Pacifica has a whole lot of that, but San Pedro, that shopping center, has that potential. That would create more revenue for the city, for us, for us as business owners, property values as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis. I don't see any other speaker cards. Actually, strike that, someone else would like to speak.
Sorry about that. I didn't have a pen, and I was just going to run up here. I'm going to tell you a few, my name's Dave Blackman. I'm going to tell you a few things I really like about this project. Over the past, there's a joke in this town, it's called sacrificial commercial. And you see it, what was built on Damon, you see it up and down Palmetto. It's people building stuff that pretends to be commercial just to get the residential in. They cover all the way up to the setbacks, zero setbacks are allowed. And I really like this project because it's a legitimate commercial project. They're not covering 100%. They're not going three stories. And the parking is, my understanding is that they're meeting their criteria by two parking spots, and they've given you an option to get rid of some outdoor seating area to make the 18. I'm slight, and here's the things I don't really like. I don't like putting restrictions on hours that you're not doing to other businesses, like the 10 o'clock here. I also don't like that you, as Dan was saying, is putting the red curbs on each side of the driveway and eliminating parking. I know it's not perfect to pull out of a driveway if there's cars parked on both sides, but that's how it is now. That's how it is on all the in and out of that parking lot, and it seems to be working fine. I also agree with, you know, the parking problem on hot days is not every day. And I'd really like to see this place thrive. We are part of the hotel, or the motel across the street. I would love to see an additional restaurant or an additional nice night use here. I also agree this is possibly a walkable place to go to for a lot of people. And I had a few more things, but it's, I'm missing it right now. But it seems like they're, and then also, the rest of the shopping center really isn't making all their parking requirements. I didn't, I remember all the people coming in with their use permits. They didn't really address the parking, they didn't know how to. But this is, they can legitimately meet their parking if you want to get rid of some of the outdoor space, but I hope you don't. I think it's a nice design, and I hope you approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Looks like that's the extent of public comments, so I appreciate everybody coming and sharing it. I would note that we also received an email from Lisa Warrens dated September 18th today at 3:31 p.m., and that was distributed to members of the commission. We've had a chance to review that. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission at this point. It looks like Commissioner Clifford has a comment or question.
Through the chair. Did, did you want to have the rebuttal?
Well, I guess, thank you. I don't know if the applicant had anything else they felt like they needed to say at this point.
So I just wanted to touch on a couple of the comments that were made, just to, I think, clarify them. So there was a comment about eight cars being required for the apartments. I think the requirement is one and a half per one-bedroom plus a guest spot, so technically There was a comment about the runoff and the flooding. So I don't know if you looked at the landscaping plan, but there's, you know, all the pavement except for the concrete in the back of the house is pervious, so the pavers adjacent to the building are pervious pavers. And then the parking lot is actually pervious concrete. And I don't know of any other applications in Pacifica where, you know, people are using the pervious concrete. So, you know, part of that strategy is to reduce the runoff rate. And then the way that the pervious pavements are designed, they're designed with kind of a gravel storage layer beneath it that's sized, you know, for the, the design storm as dictated by the city. So I'm not anticipating a hydrology problem with this project since it's being designed to the city standards, which limit the post-development runoff to less than or equal to the pre-development runoff, if that makes sense. I agree with the comment about the parking not permeating through the residential, you know, so much from, from the beach users. You see a lot of it, it is intense down at the shopping center and people parking on the highway. But I think that some of the parking issues in further west- know, so much from the beach users. You see a lot of it, it is intense down at the shopping center and people parking on the highway. But I think that some of the parking issues in further west in the residential neighborhood are created by Shelter Cove not having anywhere to park, and then big events at the firehouse that provides no parking. And those two, you know, the need for those two parking areas is right in the middle of the residential, it's not down near the shopping center. There was a comment about the sidewalks, not having enough of them. This project is proposing eight-foot-wide sidewalks. The sidewalks are currently four feet wide. We wanted to make them 10 feet wide, but engineering has a standard that says eight feet is the maximum. So, you know, we set it on eight, but they're wide enough to actually plant trees, which we're really excited about. And the commercial, like Dave said, it's not sacrificial commercial. The commercial really drove the design. It's got, you know, a lot of storefront and 15-foot ceilings, and, you know, that was the focus. And then the rest of the shopping center not meeting the parking requirements, that kind of goes back to this in-lug parking fee where the city has the potential to collect money when businesses turn over and can't meet their parking requirements to, you know, fund public parking projects like the little gravel overflow parking lot.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Cooper had a specific question on one of the points you were raising.
Yeah, I have a specific question for you. The commercial space for this, I see very little area to actually facilitate the commercial space. So how do you plan to stock the commercial space, if it's a commercial space? The commercial trash, I don't see any opening to the backside. Do you have permission to use the backside? It seems like, you know, we're saying it's commercial space, but I don't see a lot of facilitation for commercial space as far as how that would look. Have you thought about any of that? I mean, if I had to get the trash cans out from all the way to the side, I would have to bring them out of a five-foot fence, you know, 50 feet down this little corridor. Typically, trash cans from a commercial space are probably a four-and-a-half-foot trashcan.
Yeah, I think Brian can probably better comment on that, but we did reach out to recology about the size of the bins, and I think they use plastic bins now that aren't, so they're not the big heavy yellow ones that you just can't move by yourself. So there was some consideration for that. And, but I think, to answer the first part of your question, the commercial space is intended to be just a blank space for now. And then, you know, we had to, we showed where the trash and storage rooms would be. I may not be understanding the first part of your question about how to facilitate.
Yeah, I mean, typically from a commercial space, when I look at it, I see a lot of exits, a lot of egress, ingress areas. If it's, the commercial space is going to be divided into two, I see more how are the customers going to get in the store, how are they going to get out of the store? Where's the storage areas? Where's the public restroom's going to be, if there was public restrooms in this area? I see a lot more.
Sure.
I guess thought into the commercial side of it, and I don't see a lot of that here. And I guess I, you show all the bathrooms and everything else for the residential space. You don't show any of it for the commercial space. I was kind of curious on how you addressed that.
So the, I think the thought on the commercial space is that, you know, there's a main entrance in the center, and people are funneled to that, and that's kind of, you know, retail rule of thumb is you want to funnel people to one entrance, so retailers don't, because preferably it's just a single tenant. But, and I think that's why there's an option to have like up to one-third as, you know, office tenants, and I think there's a limit on only having two tenants maximum. So the entrance could be modified to facilitate two tenants, the vestibule in the middle. And as far as the bathrooms go, because there's not a tenant yet, you know, that would come online later on as part of tenant improvements.
So the, so the outdoor fireplaces are for what type of tenant?
I think we're anticipating a restaurant tenant for that type of use, but I don't see why it couldn't be used for, you know, a retailer as well.
So with residential above, like a restaurant?
I'm sorry?
Like a residential area above a restaurant or a nightclub or something like that? Is that what you envisioned?
No, not a nightclub.
I mean, a restaurant that's open hours, like?
No, it's more, I think the idea is it's more like outdoor seating waiting areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like another question here.
Just a fact question, and maybe I missed it, maybe it's for you, maybe it's for Christian, but how many parking spaces would normally be required for the retail, for the commercial part of this?
I believe the calculation is 11 spaces.
On top of the residential?
11 commercial plus seven residential.
Okay.
18 spaces total would be the basic retail requirement plus residential for this floor plan.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't go anywhere. Another question.
Yeah, the applicant mentioned moderate income housing there, and the community design element actually states housing opportunities for persons with lower, moderate income in the Pedro Point neighborhood. Are these market-rate apartments, or are they somehow subsidized?
They're market-rate.
I'm looking at the parking diagram you handed here, and it shows an addition of 48 spaces here. Have you had any conversation with Caltrans regarding this document?
No.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Clifford, did you, we're going to bring it on back to the Commission, and it looks like.
I have a question when we went to rebuttal, so I'd like, I really would love to ask.
Why don't you go ahead and ask it?
We'll do it now. I had actually a couple of questions. One, Brian probably will be able to answer these better than Michael. Brian, on the corrugated siding, I'm assuming, but I don't want to do that too much, that it's going to have some kind of really heavy-duty baked-on finish so that it doesn't wind up rusting in that.
No, it's purposefully to rust.
Is expected to rust?
Yes.
How much rust will it be starting to run in?
Correct. It's like, like what they would use on a cannery building a lot. It's used in a coastal setting quite often.
The project on Montecito?
Hilton.
Architectial Steel. What, have you guys seen that?
Hilton, on Hilton.
On Hilton. They have it.
By the library.
That's Corten Steel.
I'll take the board. That's fine. I'm assuming if it's going to rust, it's not going to have any rust in it further.
Correct.
Okay. It's formulated for that.
Correct.
Okay, I'm here. Trees, what size trees can you plant?
Twenty-one?
A 24-inch box.
Yeah, 24-inch box trees is what we provided on the plan, for the street trees, yes.
I guess I did ask for the wrong person.
I drew the landscape plan. Yeah, I think they're 24-inch box, and then we did coordinate with Aaron Clark, the city tree guru, about, you know, what kind of trees work best in salty environments. So we did put some thought into that.
I did not want to see twigs out there, that was my major concern.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Oh, I think, I just left my, right on. I had a, well, I had a question for staff.
Please, go ahead.
The red curb on both sides of the driveway, they seem to make, applicant seemed to make a good point about, maybe that's not something that's everywhere. Does it have to be here?
The planning department staff coordinated with engineering division staff with respect to evaluating sightlines and stopping distances. It was the engineering opinion that the site safety triangle that you're familiar hearing about is not applicable here. It's a slightly different standard than the stopping distance standard. The red curb recommendations on either side of the proposed development are based on the safe stopping distance standards in the Caltrans Highway Design Manual. And so it's the city staff's opinion that those are necessary to make the safest possible circulation at the site.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Steadig, did you have a?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. I see the amplified music provisions out by the fire pit, and I notice you've got houses on Dan Man there and Grand that are not too far away. Do we have a citywide, some sort of noise ordinance that would affect there or limit hours on amplified music?
I'm not aware of such an ordinance that has those kinds of explicit limitations. It's appropriate in this case for the Commission to consider whether or not those are adequate hours or if some other restrictions are appropriate. I don't know that the amplified component of the outdoor seating area for music and live performances is essential to support the findings that staff has laid out. I think unamplified music, if that was the Commission's preference, would probably equally support that sort of cohesive outdoor visitor-serving element, like an acoustic guitar or vocalist or something like that, without the aid of amplification, which could be difficult to limit in intensity over time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford?
My question is also for staff. Listening to your answer for Commissioner Campbell on the parking, and then remembering what I've read and mentioning up in 32 to 64 for a restaurant, you did base, you didn't base any of your calculations on any of that being a restaurant, right? Just on being a commercial space? That's how you arrived at?
The 32 to 64 spaces?
No, for the?
18 spaces.
The 18 spaces.
That's on the basic retail and office parking standard for the commercial component. The residential component, the seven spaces, would not vary in this. So if we're talking about the sort of the baseline commercial use there, the standard retail and office use, it's a one space per 300 square feet of floor area requirement, which yields the 11 spaces for the commercial component of the project.
So what I'm hearing from the applicant is their desire, their biggest desire would be to have a restaurant in there and have live music in the seating area. So, but I'm not hearing that we have any kind of data that would reflect what happens when that happens. We're being basically asked to waive all of those requirements for a restaurant and only go with it as if it was operating strictly for a commercial with the residential.
I suppose you could state it that way. I think, back to my earlier point in the hearing about the parking exception that's been requested, and in this case, the specific parking exception for the restaurant parking. The applicant has a fixed-size site. The applicant has probably a minimum commercial floor area and number of residential units that make the project financially feasible. And there is a fixed requirement for restaurant parking in the zoning code. And so you can't change the size of the site. It's difficult to change the economics, and so the parking exception provides an outlet for the applicant to say, when I'm weighing all these other factors, I face an unusual hardship or a practical difficulty in meeting the parking standards. Sort of on the other side of that, the applicant is facing a conundrum in that the city zoning says visitor-serving uses are the only permitted uses in the coastal zone in a C1 or C2 commercial district. And so among the visitor-serving uses, as it's defined in the zoning code, is restaurants. And so the applicant is sort of backed in through the local coastal plan and the zoning to be required to allow restaurants. And on the other hand, the zoning saying you have to provide all these spaces, which in staff's opinion cannot be reasonably provided while making an economically viable project.
It's a typical catch.
It is, in effect, except that the outlet is the practical hardship for providing the spaces, and whether the Commission thinks there's evidence there to justify that, or if the project should be modified. And as laid out in the staff report, staff doesn't think you could accommodate the parking that would be required unless you had a 500 to 1,000-square-foot commercial space, which in staff's opinion would not be a viable project at the site.
Thank you for all of that. I really do appreciate it. I wanted to make sure going forward we had all of that information.
And if I may, Chair, as the applicant mentioned, there are another, a number of other more, less tangible components of the project, like its walkability and its integration with the neighborhood, the addition of new wide attractive sidewalks, and not only meeting the zoning minimum requirement for bicycle parking of two spaces of the minimum dimensions, but also adding, I believe, five additional spaces. They don't meet the city's zoning standard, but for all practical purposes are functional, viable bicycle parking spaces. And so when you look at the use of the area with pedestrians and bicyclists and visitors to the coast that are already parking in other places as well, like at the Pedro Point Shopping Center, the city parking lot, the Park and Ride across Coast Highway at Lindemar, you know, there are a number of difficult-to-quantify factors that would, in staff's opinion, reduce the parking demand at the site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, did you have a comment or question?
Thanks. That, okay, that clarifies something. I think that, I think the report would have benefited from that discussion of how much parking would be normally affiliated with a restaurant? Or, because I feel a little bit, that's, it was confusing to me, and I'm sure it's confusing to members of the public, to not have that just straight out, and to have it as, as if it's going to be just a Realtor office or something like that.
Sure. It's in there. Admittedly, it's probably a page, you know, 17 out of 29 pages of staff report. There were a number of permits that require detailed analysis, and so forgive me if it was lost in the body of the work that's there, but there is the discussion and the estimation of what the parking demand would be for a strictly restaurant use, and that was the estimate of 32 to 64 spaces.
Okay, my apologies if it was in there. It didn't seem like it was the basis for the decision, though, so.
It was one of many considerations when you consider all of the practical difficulties and unusual hardships that the applicant would face with providing the parking to the letter of the zoning code. But I agree, it probably could have been more forcefully put, so I apologize.
That's all right. My apologies if I missed it. Question for council, just on the notion of mitigating parking based on things like the Caltrans lot or future ordinance. Can we legally approve of a project based on mitigation that is subject to third-party contracts in the future or things like that? I know on the federal side, there's case law that says we can't, but I'm not really unclear on the state.
I will defer to your planner that I don't, I don't actually think that's, I don't think that that's what's actually being proposed here. And correct me, please, Christian, if I'm wrong, but the proposal is not intending to, or the project is proposed not intending a future mitigation measure with the Caltrans right-of-way. But you would be correct that if that mitigation was necessary for environmental review purposes, it would be insufficient to mitigate an unknown, mitigate with an unknown future approval.
Was the question, or was the proposal really more to sort of the notion that the city council would pursue into a nexus study of some sort, you know, adopt some form of a mitigation fee, a parking mitigation fee that would have an application either citywide or at least some area-wide that presumably if it got done prior to the issuance of a building permit, this project might theoretically be subject to? Was that really kind of what was being proposed?
I think that's along the lines of what I had imagined. I think the applicant was providing something he saw as an alternative. I think the advice he would get from staff is that it would not feel comfortable endorsing such an alternative without the proper level of review, including environmental review, and requiring it as a component of this project. It's not something that's been studied for potential impacts.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, well, it sounds like we've really kind of worked our way through questions and comments. And I guess at this point, we want to bring it back to members of the Commission, and be interested to hear kind of what the pleasure of my colleagues is at this point. And we can, we'll start at your end, then Commissioner Clifford.
Oh, boy, I haven't cast on the button to it. Well, I'm going to start off with, I'm not in favor of office space in this particular project. I would really like to see it visitors serving strictly. I do like the housing element. I'm going to also state that I believe there needs to be some mitigation for the amplified music, and that could be actually requiring as one of our conditions that a sound test be done by the applicant at certain distances and at certain volumes, so that we could then determine what volume would work without disturbing the other, the neighbors in the area. And although I'm concerned about it also disturbing the residents of the property above, I've got to assume that there would be a disclosure, they would, anything, that there was going to be a lot of music there, and they should, they would be buying with the knowledge that that is something going forward. So I'm more concerned about those neighbors that don't have a choice, they're already there, they're going to come. So I would like to look at that. The parking, I think we're probably going to have a lot of conversation about that. I really do like the project. I think it's going to be attractive, I think it's going to add. I think it's going to add things that are needed. I do see it as a possible place for a dispensary in terms of what a commercial uses, that's visitor-serving.
It is recreation. And I am, but I am concerned that if it's a restaurant, then we have, we do, I mean, there are mitigations and there are issues about the financial viability of trying to create all the parking that the ordinance actually requires for a restaurant. But yeah, I think we need to talk more about that and see what kind of mitigations we can throw out there or conditions that we could throw out there that would make this work for them. The corrugated siding, everybody's heard the answer on that. And then going again back to parking, one of the speakers brought up residents being home on the weekends and what that does to their quality of life if they can't find parking anywhere near their own home. So again, it's, we're going to have to have a fairly in-depth conversation about the parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. I guess Commissioner Campbell, did you want to speak to that or just speak to whatever comments you have?
Yeah, I mean, I like the project too in concept, and I think that it could, it could fit there. And I found the thirty-two to sixty-four space parking range. So that was on page thirty of the report, so my apologies it was there. I didn't see it in the justification section, so I didn't make the link. But it does raise some issues. I think the comment by the retail owner in the existing shopping center, it really resonated with me. Parking's really only an issue when it's an issue. When it's on these nice days, we've got sunny days, and it's just endemic to the coast. It's just, there's just bad parking. That's just the way it is. We live on the California coast. And so we shouldn't base our parking decisions on these worst-case scenarios. And I agree with that. And yeah, on an everyday level, you can find parking. So I guess where I'm just having this conceptual difficulty is it seems like we're creating a, we're allowing a variance of about one or two cars for this commercial development, which is something we do all the time for hardship, and this wouldn't be something that is untoward. But I'm just worried about the sixty-four, the thirty-two to sixty-four space exemption versus the two-car exemption. And I'm just trying to get clear on how to logically frame that in this staff report because it just didn't seem like it made the link. But, and I would be willing to, if you can tell me kind of the link, if you could explain that linkage again or the logic of it, I'm totally willing to hear it because I do like, I do think something like this should go there, but I just want to make sure that we're not driving a hole through the parking exemption, parking exemptions, where anybody could claim a hardship and then just, you know, anything goes. I don't want to create that precedent, so I just want to see if we can avoid that.
I'll do my best to lay out the reasoning that I had in recommending approval of the parking exception. As noted earlier, you know, we have a fixed quantity of land area for the property owner. I think we'll all cede that point. We have certain minimum safe circulation standards in the zoning, you know, twenty-five foot drive aisles, minimum parking stall dimensions and so forth to ensure safe ingress and egress. We have this baseline of between sixteen and eighteen parking spaces that I think we grant are the minimum that would be acceptable for the combined residential and commercial parking requirement. And then we have this zoning definition in the coastal regs about visitor-serving uses being the only permitted uses. And among the, you know, enumerated types of subuses within a visitor-serving use are restaurants. And so we have this local coastal plan and this zoning imperative to allow visitor-serving uses, which include restaurants. And so the applicant is sort of backed in against, you know, the fixed size of the site, this zoning requirement to allow visitor-serving uses in there as a permitted use, and then this rather large parking standard. And so as the applicant noted, with the remaining infill sites that are in town, you're probably scarcely going to find a site that can meet the requirements for that. And so when weighing all of the various requirements and their relative importance, it was staff's opinion that the practical hardship exists for providing all of those spaces. With that said, there may be something short of a binary allow it or don't allow the restaurant use. Maybe it's possible to limit it to a smaller portion of the commercial floor area such that you, you know, in effect, may cut that demand in half. So if you limit the commercial or the restaurant area to half, you go from sixteen to thirty-two to maybe eight to sixteen for the restaurant component. And there may be other ways in terms of limiting the amount of seating area inside and whatnot that may have some effect to minimize the amount of restaurant parking demand. But I wasn't aware of a way, I couldn't identify one, to get out of that conundrum the applicant's facing or the catch-22, I believe Commissioner Clifford called it, of sort, an effect being required to have restaurant uses, but then also being required to bear this huge parking burden, but not being able to change the size of your site. And so that's probably the simplest way I can lay out the major thought process. Layered onto that are those other considerations of the walkability and bikability of this neighborhood. The topography is amenable to that. It's flat, you know, eastward and northward of the site, ties into the coastal trail. There are other public parking lots to the north and to the northeast. And there are those joint visits that people will make to the Pedro Point Shopping Center and walk over to the site, vice versa, that in totality, when weighing all of the principles and policies and goals of the city, as the commission always does, on balance, it makes sense and the applicant faces a practical hardship to providing the spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Sometimes I don't think that projects really surpass the threshold of being viable. Some projects are not, just are not viable. Some projects just don't fit the topography or the area from which they're proposed. And I think that this is, to me, this is one of those projects. Although the design has some nice features to it, I'd struggle with some of the features that are on it. I can struggle with the commercial viability with putting residential above it. It's a visitor-serving type of building. I don't think office space is a visitor-type of building. I don't think if you're going to be riding your bike through here to the coastal trail that you're going to be going and filing your taxes. That's not just something that I think that the shopping center facilitates, in my opinion. The red curbs, again, I like to see on-street parking. I like to see the red curbs gone. I like to see the building pushed off a little bit and providing parking on the street to facilitate this facility. I'm not saying that he has to facilitate any type of parking for what's around the neighborhood. That's not what we're here for. Does he facilitate the, what's proposed here in this building? If you carefully construct it, you could maybe make that argument that he has. But I'm not sure that the space is really a visitor-serving space. So I have a problem with that. The commercial and the accessibility to the units and above, I mean, again, if you're going to park on one side, you have to walk all the way around the building to get to your, to your unit above. I don't, I don't think that's very feasible. Typically, when we see developments, we see very planned-out ways of the way that the tenants will actually access their units. And, you know, not having to go through public spaces, not having to travel across a parking lot where people are traveling to get to a business, it's not something that I would normally see. So yeah, there are hardships, but I don't think in this case, in my opinion, I'm not willing to say that this is a viable project for this particular parcel, the way that it's designed.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Gordon, did you want to speak to this? I haven't seen your light, but as we...
I'm still, I'm still listening.
Okay. Commissioner Steg, Steg Inc., sorry.
Thank you. I'm in favor of mitigating the amplified music ten a.m. to ten p.m. daily. I'm in favor of conditioning this to dedicate six of the spots to residents. Looks like we're losing five spots on San Pedro. They just disappear, and we're adding, you know, four units. That's a loss of parking for the neighborhood. Also, the, probably like clockwork, two times a year, this, this location is just soggy. I think that maintenance contract for the permeable pavement is, is really important. You know, you could, you could take a bowl of permeable concrete and carry water around it all day, and it would turn dark, but you'd still have water in it at the end of the day. So the whole idea that it's the same as just ground is not borne out by reality. So again, that would be my, my choice. Mitigation of the amplified music, ten a.m. to ten p.m. Condition, so six of the spots, parking spots are dedicated to the residents, which still a comp, still allows their hardship by reducing the number of spots by one, and the maintenance contract for the permeable behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I frankly, as I think about this, I believe that we probably ought to, as a condition of use permit, if we can, just do away with the notion of amplified music. I don't know that that's necessarily an essential element of a commercial use, and I think that was, would be something that would sort of mitigate very effectively some aspects of complaints. I think that there's plenty of music that doesn't require amplification that could, you could go there. I'm not sure that I'm, for some of the reasons that staff has articulated, I'm not sure I'd be in favor of reserving spaces specifically for residences. I frankly am generally in favor of the project. I like the idea of the residential units. Frankly, I think that there, every residential unit we can squeeze out of, you know, the infill space that we have is, is appropriate and good. This seems to be a well-conceived project, recognizing there are a lot of various regulatory hoops that need to be jumped through. I think that they've been, to my satisfaction anyway, articulated in the staff report, and I'd be prepared to support the project.
Okay, great. So we've got the chair and support, Commissioner Cooper's, it's not viable. So where I'm coming, let's see, where I fall is, I appreciate Commissioner Clifford's determination to flush out the parking for the restaurant since it seems like that's a, it's a logical use for the area. It's almost, it's even a desired use for that, for that ground-floor commercial space. But then what we're really doing is we're talking about thirty-two to sixty-four spaces for the restaurant. That's, say that's an average of forty-eight spaces. So we'd be really granting, we wouldn't be granting a variance for two spaces. We're really granting a variance for like, yo, I don't know, thirty-something spaces? That's a lot. I'm really concerned about the impact on parking in that area. It's already tight. But on the other hand, gosh, that space is just, it's, this is a great, great use for that end space in that shopping center right next to the taproom. I think the idea of an adjoining outdoor seating place next to the taprooms, outdoors, patio, it could create some real synergy for, for that, for that, what is it, the southern portion of Pedro Shopping Center, Pedro Point Shopping Center. Lord knows, our community could use another great restaurant. We could use, or even if it's not a restaurant, it's potentially awesome retail area for, you know, that area gets a ton of foot traffic. So I got, I mean, it's, this, this project is all about trade-offs. I can see how there must have been an enormous amount of back and forth between what the applicant came with and what, what we're seeing, I'm sure, is very, very different. So I appreciate that give-and-take process. I hate to see, I hate to see our requirements for parking skewer a potentially great asset for our community. I see that potentially happening. It's no question that there's not enough, that the applicant is not providing enough parking for this project. There's just not even debatable. But it's, so I guess, I'm not even going to pretend that that's the case, but especially if there's a restaurant there, which I want there to be a restaurant there. I think anyone would want a restaurant there. So the question, the question really becomes, okay, is that a trade-off I'm willing to make to make this project happen? As Christian points out, it's, you know, making the commercial space smaller is, you've got a question of economic viability. I'm intrigued by something that you had said before about, well, one option is to put a limitation on the size of the, if there was to be a restaurant, put a limitation on the size of it so that perhaps there wouldn't be such a great demand for parking. I'd be interested in exploring that a little bit more. I don't know if that's, you know, if that all of a sudden makes the, the project not as economically viable, I don't know. I'd rather see the project go forward than not go forward on balance. I agree with, I don't think there needs to be amplification either. I'm concerned about the impact on neighbors. I'm also concerned about the impact on the other tenants. I don't know if I'm sitting in the taproom, if I would necessarily, why I'd be hearing amplified music, but probably I do, actually, think about it. Anyway, but I am concerned about what the neighbors might, the impact on the neighbors. I agree, I can't remember what commissioners questioned the office space notion, you know, I'm not sure office space really goes there. I'm in favor of giving the owner maximum flexibility for lease, for renting the place out. On the other hand, I'm not sure office space really works at a visitor-serving area. You know, I'm just throwing stuff against the wall, really.
This gravel overflow parking lot that we've got the illustration of, so that's Caltrans' property, we would need to get some sort of agreement with Caltrans.
That's correct.
That's not zoned for anything. It's just something that we could, it's just a right-of-way. Is there any way to, I imagine we can't, we can't condition anything because of Caltrans, but is there any way to?
I have a suggestion for the commission's consideration. So, so the, the analysis presented to you is correct that restaurants are permitted uses in the coastal zone as a visitor-serving use. There is a provision, however, of our coastal regs that states that if, if a visitor-serving commercial use will result in a mix of uses that is not consistent with some provisions of the LCP land use plan, they may be conditionally permitted, which I'm reading that to, to mean that based on the discussion this evening, staff can prepare findings to support a condition that a restaurant would need to come back and get a use permit. And so in that way, the project itself can move forward, but it would be deferring that decision to the planning commission at a time when there's an actual tenant that's been, is interested in the site, perhaps has a letter of intent signed, and, and can actually provide information about their business plan to you guys that, you know, you may feel more comfortable with. Perhaps there's a seating plan or just the way that their restaurant works that, you know, they can address parking in a different way. Who knows? They may be able, across the street, to negotiate a, you know, use of parking there, valet service, or even have time to negotiate with Caltrans about that site. So, you know, this, that would, those are all so speculative, it's difficult for this applicant, without a tenant, to move that far forward. But perhaps if they do get a viable tenant, and what I'm hearing is that you guys are very much would love to see that before you with some solutions presented. And so, you know, I think as staff and the applicant understands that that would be in no way kind of saying that restaurants are, are not supported by, by, by putting that condition on the project. that condition on the project.
I like that solution. It's kind of intellectually honest with the parking situation, and I would also like, I don't know if, if the commissioners would agree, if we have the ability to ask council to kind of get on it with Caltrans and try to start negotiating what seems like this gravel parking lot thing, this is something we should do anyway, irregardless of this project. We should just have that because of just the parking concerns we have on the bad days. So.
Let me see if I can clarify or make sure I'm understanding what staff's suggesting is probably actually a continuance of the item to prepare findings that would support, I guess, the restaurant as a conditional use, or do we feel like the findings that we have right now and the information that we've got in front of us is adequate to, to put together a motion that's a?
I feel like what we have tonight, we can put together a motion.
Okay.
Okay, good. I mean, I'd like to approve it today.
Yeah, that'd be ideal if we could approve something today.
So I think that I, besides the parking, I'd like to hear if there's a consensus on whether or not office would be approved under this use permit, about the designated parking spaces, yes or no, and amplified music, whether or not there's just not going to be any amplified music, or if the hours, you know, to Commissioner Steggen's point, would?
I'm fine with no, no amplified music at all. I would prefer that we not vet, vet individual tenants for the applicant. I think that's overly burdensome to the applicant, whether it's restaurant or whatever. It's hard enough to rent a commercial building as it is. You don't need to install a massive bureaucracy there. The, I do prefer dedicating some space to the residents, some parking spaces there.
Commissioner Cooper, did you have anything else you wanted to say about the project at this point?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gordon?
I, yeah, I, I'm, I hear what Commissioner Steggenik is saying, I'm off, but I'm still, I, I think that's an interesting way to move this project forward, given all of the problems and heartburn that the parking issue is having in the restaurant context. I think it's a great way to move it forward.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just one other consideration, since parking weighs heavily on your consideration of this item. It's sort of conventional wisdom with these, you know, it's called the mid-20th century parking formulas for various land uses, to discreetly provide for all of the parking in much the same way that we talked about beach parking or coastal parking on the few, you know, beautiful days a year, right? That's the peak scenario, it's the worst-case scenario, and that's how these kinds of parking formulas are calculated. It's the worst-case scenario, you know, you park the shopping mall for Christmas Eve, right? But the rest of the year, there's ample parking. It's sort of a similar concept, in my opinion, with this restaurant parking standard. It's, it's geared towards essentially the peak period of usage, which is not likely to persist throughout the day, all day, every day. And so, you know, as this project is full of trade-offs, as Commissioner Gordon laid out, if the commission is willing to make a trade-off for the project in totality without adding undue burdens for the applicant and prospective tenants, you know, I think, I don't think that trade-off is, you know, 24/7, 365 for this excess parking demand. It's probably not the case that 32 to 64 people will be trying to drive their cars to this site at all hours of the day and night. And so, it's a much more limited impact, in my opinion, if that helps the commission weigh that at all.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, did you want to say anything about the particular proposal?
Is it too late to ask the applicant what he thinks of the special use?
I think under the circumstance, is it, I'm sorry?
That's fine.
It's fine, yeah. I was going to say, you wanted to speak to the particular matter at hand here.
So the question is about the, the restaurant parking or about the office use?
Restaurant parking.
Or both? Okay. Yeah, so I think as Tina mentioned, you know, it could come back when there's a tenant and they, and you could have the same discussion. And I think the disadvantage for that is it creates this bureaucratic process for someone who wants to put in a really great restaurant that may turn them off from even, you know, looking at the space, because you won't be able to advertise the space as restaurant-ready. It's, you might be able to have a restaurant, but you got to go talk to the planning commission and, and go through that public process. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, other than you'd be ever, you'd be able to get some very specific information from that tenant on, you know, space for people using the restaurant, which I think is, is what drives that parking requirement, it's 50 square feet per, you know, person or something like that. And that's obviously not going to be all 3,000 square feet of the retail space, but it could be half of it, it could be two-thirds of it, you just don't know, it depends on the type of restaurant. I, I think, I think the other thing to, to say about the restaurant parking is that, and Christian kind of alluded to this, it's kind of an antiquated parking code. I don't know exactly what other cities are doing, but this feels very burdensome, and maybe this is, is the standard, and it's kind of the worst-case scenario like Christian mentioned, but, you know, I've always, every time I've looked at this part of the parking code, I've always thought that's a lot, and how does all the, how do all the other restaurants do it?
Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add?
You know, at this point, I, I'm persuaded by staff and by what I've heard that it's an antiquated parking number, and so I, I don't like, I'm kind of with Commissioner Gordon, I don't like to base commercial projects on parking cars, especially when we're moving to Uber and things like that, and there's other ways to get there. But I would like, if we can, at the end of this meeting, or I don't know how we do it, to really, I think it's incumbent on the city to get this gravel lot in place, and just, just in general, but also for this project, because the applicant is, is in this double bind, and the city has a way of solving it, I think, with this gravel lot, if they can, and Caltrans does too, so.
Well, that, we might take that as a direction to, to staff to explore.
I can take that to the city manager, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Great.
Commissioner Clifford?
I think I've already said that I'm not in favor of the office space in this project. Not amplifying music seems like a perfectly good solution to worrying about what, what sound levels are going to be like. There's lots of perfectly adequate music that could be played beautifully. And designated parking spots or assigned parking spots for the homeowners there, I'm having trouble figuring out how that's going to work, but I want it to work. I, I do not want people who buy a home to not know where they're parking, not know how they're going to get to their home. So I, I find that a, a real concern, but then maybe the applicant could come up with some kind of way to mitigate that particular issue.
Well, it looks like we might hear from the applicant, but I wanted to be real clear on, I had a question actually, that's been spurred by the comment, that you can answer at the same time. Are these rental or, or sale properties?
Right, they're rental, so I wanted to clarify that, that, you know, they wouldn't be purchased with the expectation that a parking spot comes along with it. I don't think that's an issue for the project either way, if the spots are marked or if they're not marked, but I think, you know, kind of the current thoughts on parking is that, you know, the, the peak demand for parking between the different uses occurs at different times, and so if you mark the parking as resident-only, you sort of further limit that. It's like, it's like taking out the single-user parking lot and then restricting it one step further by, you know, only letting certain uses use certain spots.
And I personally understand that answer, but there is still the issue of weekend parking, because that's when residents are likely to be home, and it's also likely for the commercial areas to be getting their highest traffic.
Sure, and, and I personally, having, you know, lived in a million apartments when I was younger, it sort of comes with the territory of renting an apartment.
Commissioner Gordon?
Sure. Oh, one more, did you have anything to say about if we took out the, the office, the office space aspect?
That doesn't have a, a big bearing, no. It was just, I think it was included because, you know, the allowed uses are very specific, and so while we were talking about those uses, it would be good to kind of float that idea, just have some flexibility, but if it was, if office was not included, that's not an issue.
And what about the amplification?
I, I don't think our intent was ever to have, you know, somebody playing metal music out there. It's more like if you've been a grape in the fog and they have, you know, that music is amplified, they have speakers, but it's kind of acoustical and vocal. And then the other piece of the amplification part is if someone wanted to have outdoor speakers and sort of have music playing in the background while people were waiting outside, that's kind of a nice element too. So, but maybe that condition can be clarified to provide, you know, the acoustical setup and, and maybe some background music, but not, you know, not like the rock show or anything.
Yeah, there's got to be a way to, to set a decibel limit or something like, I mean, because we can't be the first city to be trying to find that balance, right?
A lot of cities want to and a lot of cities struggle. You know, it's easy to set a decibel level, it's very difficult to monitor and enforce it, requires very specialized equipment and training, and how do you parse out roadway noise from, noise from the site, from jets flying over? So it's all noise, and is the applicant responsible for all of that? Not necessarily. And so, decibel level restrictions have their challenges, it's not something I would be in favor of.
Thanks. All right, let me just, thanks a lot. I didn't, all right, so Christian's convinced me that I'm okay with the project as is in terms of the parking. I, I'm not in favor of design, of designating any of the parking spaces for residential use, partly because I think there's going to be a natural workout in terms of the hours of use with, I've been to too many parking lots in San Francisco where there's, where they've tried this, and the parking space is just, you stay, you've got like three spaces that are designated, and they're always empty, and then everybody's fighting for all the remaining spots, it's crazy. So I just, I also think that, that folks who either buy that place or rent that place, you know, it's going to come with trade-offs. It's going to have an ocean view, you're going to be like surrounded by incredible facilities, and parking's going to be really tough sometimes, and that's just the way it is. I hate to take away this precious commodity and designating it for, for the folks living there when it's not even necessarily going to be needed for a majority of the time. Anyway, so I'm against that. In terms of the, the office space, I'm, I don't think we need it. The amplification, no amplification is kind of, having heard Mike talk, it sounds kind of draconian, so if there was some kind of middle ground, I'd be open, I'd be more in favor of that. But I also think that, you know, Jimi Hendrix style, like, you know, blaring probably is not a workable option for the community there.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I never got the word in on amplification. I actually don't think an amplification ban is necessary. I look at the Surf Spot, they had a lot of sound issues with sound echoing up into rock away, and they were able to fix it with putting the drummer in a glass container, just so bad for the drummer. But there's ways to make it work, and I think we, you know, it looks like the orientation of this is towards the taproom where the music would be coming out of, if I have it right. So it would be going away from the residences, and I'd be in favor of letting amplification happen, and if it gets loud, if it's winter's level, then maybe, you know, there's a, I'm sure there's a code enforcement issue, but.
There's probably some private or public nuisance piece, but I do have to say, and I don't see further light, so maybe I'll, I'll jump in at this point. I, in my work in the county, I mean, we spent a lot of time arguing about these, these sorts of cases involving noise and nuisance and what have you. Perhaps maybe to the extent we were talking about modifying the use permit, maybe to the extent that amplified music was sought in the future, perhaps that could be something can be conditioned and brought back for, for consideration. I mean, with some explanation as to how or why it is that we should be convinced that the particular things that are being, you know, sort of proposed are not going to create a problem. But maybe that's overkill. I, you know, at the end of the day, I wouldn't vote against the project on that basis. I, I'm wondering if we don't have, given sort of the comments that we've heard, a motion that perhaps somebody would want to offer. Commissioner Gordon?
I'll take a, I'll take a whack, with some help from staff. All right. What page is the packet page is the motion, recommended motion on?
143.
143? All right. So I think that architecting this, I thought I heard a consensus on leaving the parking as is.
So granting the parking exception.
Granting the parking exception.
I believe no office space was, no office use, right?
Was a consensus, and we were, oh, amplification, where the heck did we come out on that? Was there a consensus?
It seemed like the weight of the, the weight of people who spoke to it were, I think, leaning toward not requiring any, well, not.
Restricting.
Not restricting it.
Okay, okay. All right, so move to, I'm moved to adopt the attached resolution, including conditions of approval and Exhibit A, to find the project is exempt from SEQA to approve site development permit PSD-817-17, coastal development permit CDP-32-17, use permit UP-83-17, sign permit S-123-17, and parking exception PE-171-17, and to authorize removal of heritage trees and to incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference. And then I'm going to say no, take out the permitted office use, right?
So I, I would suggest adding to the motion with, with the amendment to not permit office use under the use permit, and is that the only?
I think that's the only variation from what was.
And then I would just add, just in case, as we finalize the resolution, to direct staff to modify conditions as necessary to reflect this amendment, just in case it's referenced in several conditions.
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, well, it's the motion, do I have a second? I'll second it if no one seconds. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, we'll go ahead and vote. Looks like.
It's really hard for me, because I really like the project, but I really do have an issue with the.
Okay, well, I'll ask you to vote one way or the other.
Yeah, I know I want to have to.
Now.
And I have to.
Thank you. Excellent. So this motion carries five in favor, one against, with Commissioner Cooper voting against. Thank you. Well, that takes us into communications and, Commission Communications, are there any members of the commission who want to report out on communications? Seeing none. Staff Communications?
So, wanted to give you a few updates. So at the last council meeting, the city council provided direction to staff regarding alternative financial institutions, which are better known as like payday lenders or check cashing institutions, and they've directed us to bring back legislation to, to regulate these businesses and cap the amounts that are allowed in town. So we are working with the city attorney's office to do that, and the planning commission will be the next stop to make a recommendation to city council in the coming months. The city council approved a contract for a new city manager, Kevin Woodhouse. He will start on October 9th. He's currently with Mid Penn Open Space District as assistant GM and was the deputy city manager with Mountain View prior to that. And the city council also approved the amendments to the EQ Basin project hours. And then, as I mentioned during the library, if you're going to be at the Fog Fest, stop by to say hi at the city booth. We're not only going to have information about the library, but lots of other stuff for the city.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks again to Commissioner Clifford for all his work on the library committee. That was a pretty heavy lift tonight, and appreciate your participation. And I also wanted to welcome Commissioner Steggen. I'm sorry I missed last meeting and wasn't here for your, for your first one.
How dare you, sir.
Excellent. So all that said, then, I guess we're ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Cooper?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Gordon?
Second.
Thanks. Go ahead and vote. Thanks, everybody.